Good almost afternoon. I think we're a minute off from the afternoon, everybody. Um, we are gonna start getting some things kicked off here because there are some formalities to start with upfront. Uh, before we get into the candidates, opening remarks and some Q and A's. So I do want to make sure that we get started here. So we're doing so promptly. And you get as much time as possible uh with the city council candidates. For everyone's benefit, I will note that this is being recorded um not so it can be put on our website, our social media, our YouTube, a litany of different places. Um, so that it's made available to our members and the public because that's obviously an important resource for people to have. I'll also note, I don't know if they're on yet, uh but I have the non-parole was planning on being on here as well, is my understanding. So.
That's me, hi.
Um, so we should get some newspaper coverage as well, but I do always like to note that just so everyone knows, especially the candidates. Who's on and who's might be, uh, you know, reporting and such um with the information that's happening with the event. But to get officially started, um, I think most of you have had a chance to meet me, but um I'm Drew Camp and I'm the president and CEO of the Council of Love's area Chamber of Commerce. I've been in this role uh since August of 2020. It's crazy to think that it's been that long already. Um, but we're really excited about some of the great things that we've accomplished as an organization and we're accomplishing as a community. This obviously falls, this candidate forum obviously falls in very much on that community piece. And one of the big things that's our responsibility as a Chamber of Commerce is to make sure that we're making advocacy information, candidate information, those in elected office or seeking elected office. Um, giving them the opportunity to speak to our members and really speak to some of the business issues on from not only the chamber members, but also the community members. Uh, betterment and knowledge. So with that, I will just kind of get started, kind of going over and providing an overview of what the event's gonna look like today. So what we'll start with is I'm gonna just provide some of this overview of what the um process and what the format will be for today. And then we're gonna jump into um opening comments with the candidates. Um, there's four candidates. And I'll give them obviously a chance in their opening comments to introduce themselves, but they'll each have two minutes for opening remarks. And then we'll jump right into the question and answer session, um at which point they'll have a minute and a half to respond to each of the questions being asked. Uh, we do have a timer as you probably all saw here um kind of set up. Um. So you, the candidates will be aware, as will others on the, on the meeting as to how much time they have left for responses. But they'll have two minutes for opening remarks, a minute and a half to respond to each question and a minute of closing remarks as well. For people who may want to ask a question, feel free to do so in the chat, just as you've seen with other zooms that we've done. It works a lot better if you only have one individual um asking the people questions. So if you have a question, put it in the chat. It may not get asked exactly, or it may not have a chance to get asked. I will preface with that. Just depending on how many other questions come up and what we're able to do, or it might get tied in with another question that's in similar in nature. So please do note that, but please do feel free to send a question in the chat. Candidates, I will note, you don't necessarily um have to be reading that or responding to that. Cause like I said, I will ask those questions um going forward up to make sure that they are asked and the members and the attendees are having their questions answered. The last thing that I wanted to note is we do have four candidates for city council. They're being featured, but I did want to note that Mayor Walsh is also on the ballot. He's not participating in the forum simply because he's running unopposed. Um, so he is on the call. And he is obviously listening in to see, as you guys all are too, what these candidates have to say, but he is not going to actively participate uh in the forum. Like I said, because he's unopposed, it will be the four uh candidates for the two open seats on the city council that we will feature. So with that, um, we'll get right into the kind of the nuts and bolts of this and we'll start with opening comments. And each individual candidate will have two minutes and we'll just go in alphabetical order based on last name and we'll start with Lindsay Danielson.
All right, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, perfect. Um, so I am Lindsay Danielson and um like Drew said, I'm running for a city council. Um, currently I hold the chair position on the city um planning commission, which I've had for um been on the commission for eight years. Um, Tom Hannah Fann appointed me back in 2013. Um, just thought I was a good candidate and bringing a female um diversity aspect to the, to the commission. Um, with that um experience, I have um a lot of knowledge of what our city needs as far as growth and that's primary, my primarily my platform. Um, just getting affordable housing to our city, um bringing new members to our city and keeping them here. Um, so we have a lot of projects going on that do promote that as far as like the West Broadway corridor and other developments in town. Um, originally I am from Algonah, Iowa, and I moved here in 2006 after college. Um, I went to Iowa State University with a degree in kinesiology. Um, I've worked in healthcare for the past 15 years, specifically cardiology. Um, with that, you know, I think it's really important to have a healthcare aspect on the, on the council as well. It just brings a lot of um diversity to our group. Um, the city, what initially brought me here was just the sense of community and the sense of acceptance. When I first moved here, I got involved in a lot of different programs in boards uh right off the bat. Um, I had the opportunity to work at Barley's while I worked at the cardiac center. So I've been involved with teammates, been involved um on the um. Boys and Girls Club Board as a trustee, um disaster action team for the Red Cross, uh CB impact. So I just had a lot of um. Lot of experience with our city or with our community in general. Um, you know, I feel that I bring a lot to the table with my experience on the council or the commission. And I just really appreciate the opportunity to speak here today and I'm really proud of the fact that I'm running um and the fact that I'm the only female running. So that's really important to me.
Well, thank you, Lindsay. And the next individual we'll go to for open comments, as I said, in alphabetical order is uh Steve Gorman. I will add that Chris Peterson did note he will have to jump on late, so we will handle it accordingly when he's able to jump on and join us. But Steve, the floor is yours.
All right. Uh, thank you, Drew, and uh thanks to the chamber here uh for opening up a discussion towards the city council race coming up. Uh, a little about myself, my name is Steve Gorman. I was born and raised in Council Bluffs, Iowa. Uh, I was born into a family of eight children. Um, I was the seventh out of eight. Uh, I went to both public and private schools. I graduated from St. Albert's High School. Uh, where I met my wife, Chris, of 38 years. Um, we've been married 38 years. Uh, she is a retired public school teacher. She taught in the Council Plus Community School District uh for 21 years. Um, I bring to the table uh both private and public sector uh work. I worked as a journeyman electrician when I, when I got out of high school, I went into the trades. Um, I acquired a master journeyman's electrician and I ran electrical crews, wiring and um mostly packing houses, doing ammonia refrigeration. And uh industrial and commercial work. Um, I went into the fire service at 30 years old. Where I uh worked 30 years as a Council Plus firefighter, just recently retiring. Uh, on September 8th this year, uh due to an injury. Uh, I didn't really wanna retire, but uh. When you, when you get hurt and sometimes you're not able to go back to work in that capacity. I have two adult children. Uh, one lives in LA and one lives in Omaha. And I look forward to answering your questions today and uh and it will give you a little bit more of what I had can bring to the table. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And next up, we'll have a Joe Don Hunter.
Okay, uh, thank you, Drew, and thanks for everybody that's in attendance. Um, thank you to the chamber for hosting this. I think it's important to have the opportunity to just let people know where we stand and what, what we have to offer and, and why we're running. So. Um, as Drew said, my name is Joe Don Hunter. I'm born and raised right here in Council Bluffs. Um, my family's been here for a, for a long time. Um, I went to uh Council Plus Public Schools, graduated from Abraham Lincoln. Um, I've got a degree in business administration from Morningside College in Sioux City. And uh so since coming back from Sioux City. I have lived and worked um right here in Council Bluffs. Um, I'm married to Rachel Danker. Uh, we have a little uh baby girl on the way in January, so um recently married, starting a family. And uh obviously choosing to do that right here in Council Bluffs. Um, always been proud to be from this town. I've had some, some great opportunities and uh. Um, I really feel uh feel inspired to run for city council to make sure that uh my little daughter and uh. You know, my nieces and nephews and just these younger kids, uh this younger generation has a good opportunity as well and a place that they can be proud to call home. So. Um, I currently work in real estate. I'm a Realtor for Berkshire Hathaway. I also substitute teach for the community school district. Coach football uh at Abraham Lincoln High School. So um I'm involved in the community. I'm, I'm vested here. Um, I'm passionate about Council Bluffs and, and making progress. And just uh being a part of that leadership effort and uh in solving problems and, and uh making this a place where we can be, we can be proud to call it home. And I'm. I'm really excited to be participating in it. And so thank you guys again. Looking forward to it.
Thank you, Joe Don. And as I mentioned before, Chris isn't gonna be a little late in joining us. So one thing I will say, it may seem a little um odd. But what we'll do when he is able to join us when it fits in, we'll have him provide some opening comments, even though it will kind of be in the middle of Q and A. But I wanna forward him that opportunity as well. And then we'll jump back into questions. It'll be after, obviously, we finish a round of questions. We'll let him jump in and then we'll jump back into the Q and A portion. But we're gonna start the Q and A portion now. And as I noted, you'll have a minute and a half to respond to each of these questions. One thing I did wanna note is there are times, sometimes where another candidate or someone else has addressed everything that you think needs to be addressed with that issue. Please do feel free, if you don't have a lot to add, feel free to say, I agree with what such and such was said, and you can leave it at that. There's no harm in that. You just, I just wanted you to know that that is something you're perfectly fine to do. So. The first question, we'll start with Lindsay again, and then we'll go Steve and then Joe Don um just down the list. And then the next question, we'll start with Steve and so forth. But the first question is, there's a lot of positive momentum in Council Bluffs, and I know some of you spoke to that in your opening comments. There's a lot of good things and positive momentum happening. If you're elected, how will you make sure that positive momentum continues?
Good question. So um as I mentioned previously, we have a lot of projects that have been um in the works for many years. So let's talk about the West Broadway corridor, for instance, that's a 20-year plan. So we're in probably year six of that. So. Uh, basically what I wanna make sure is that we do is bring the correct businesses to our city. And what I mean by that is making sure that they um they apply to the areas. What we wanna know our market, we wanna know um what we're looking to attain in those areas. So. Um, you know, continue to provide affordable housing, continue to provide housing for the elderly individuals that are on fixed incomes. Um, continue to provide uh multifamily and um single-family units. Um, with the business aspect, I'd like to bring like for the spine is, for instance, I'd like to bring businesses that apply to that area. So. Um, I think in the past, we've had issues with bringing the wrong, not necessarily the wrong businesses, but not the right businesses to certain areas of town. So I want them to be successful. Um, you know, we have the Iowa West Foundation promoting areas in the spine currently. Um, with Big Kells being one of the main projects right now, that's that they've funded. Uh, but just making sure that we're getting all, um, that we're providing the right spaces in the right areas. Um. You know, with the affordable housing, I think it's important to note what areas of town we need to update as far as our comprehensive plan. So we do have zoning, um, you know, if it's, if it's labeled industrial, maybe for instance, changing it to a single-family, um, single-family zoning. So that way we can provide those housing units. We have multiple areas up going up in town, um, over on College View, um, on uh Bennett. And I think it's important just to continue that growth. So just being on the planning commission, I have that knowledge of what we're looking at. We see multiple, um, we see multiple. Um, areas, sorry, just had a multiple areas that need girls. And I think it's important just to continue with that.
Thanks, Lindsay. And uh next we have uh Steve up to you as to how will you continue the positive momentum in Council Bluffs?
Um, I would go to work uh as a city councilman. I'm a, my first plan is to make this a full-time job and get out and work with the different uh. Uh, agencies and committees that have brought a lot of good things to Council Bless in the last several years. I've seen a lot of change since I've been working in the city. Uh, amongst our uh community, we have a internet system that's offered down through the corridors. Uh, the west end corridor and the updates going along there, the interstate uh development and restructuring of our interstate. We have an industrial park south of town that's starting to bring in uh new businesses. And uh hopefully we can uh look to move some, some of the industry down in there that needs to be moved down there. And uh that I think needs to be moved down there and also uh revitalizing our South Main Street. I'd like to get out and work with our neighborhood associations. Um, we have several neighborhood associations within the community that bring a lot to the table. Uh, we'll work with seven one two and uh Iowa Western is one of the biggest plus's we have, and I think underutilized uh. Uh, and on the ad, under advertised uh assets we have to this community. That's where our workforce development is from. And uh I'll work very hard to bring young families and develop art and on work with our school board and uh the chamber to bring young families and increase uh. Uh, the opportunities here. Thank you.
Um, thanks, Steve. And and one thing I might do every now and then is not to drag it out longer, but ask a follow-up question if there's something I think that's of, of value in doing so. Um, so Steve, you mentioned uh getting some companies down into the south part for the industrial land. Or do, can you elaborate a little bit? Or who are some of those folks that you think maybe benefit from moving to that southern industrial land?
Well, I think that uh we have an industrial park down there that's underutilized. We have uh two major interstates that roll through Council Bless. And we have also the river that's run is very close. Um, the railroads run through here and we can draw in new business in here with those utilities. And we're doing a good job of that so far with the development. Um, but I think one of the areas that I think we could look at uh the South Main corridor. Um, we have a company down there, uh Conagra, that I think uh would be better served down in that utility area. Um, it would take an industry that brings trucking into the neighborhood. Um, and uh. We have a development right down in there with uh with the arts building and, and the uh art buffs, you know, and so. I think that that's something that we could work together and maybe work with Conagra to get that uh uh better utilized and put it back into more affordable housing and. And develop that South Main corridor a little better. That's a big idea of mine. It's something that would take a lot of work in the city-state. And uh it may even federal help get them moved over there. But it's something we could look at.
Thanks, Steve. And uh Joe Don, that brings us to you. What are some ideas that you have um to try to make sure that we maintain and continue the positive momentum we are seeing in Council Bluffs?
Sure, thank you. Um, first off, I'm really encouraged and, and uh that there is a lot of positive momentum. Uh, there's a lot of uh people, as I've gone out and campaigned and just in the last couple of years with working uh in Council Bluffs. There's a lot of positive momentum. There's some um young people that are wanting to get involved and uh I think it's outstanding. Um. You know, a huge part of that is just raising public awareness and uh. And just letting people know what we're up to. You know, we want people to know more about the First Avenue project, for instance, and, and other projects that we have. We want the public to participate as much as they can and to share ideas and to engage those opportunities. Um, so. Just raising public awareness and educating the public, um, that communicate, that communication piece is key. Um, it gets people excited. It makes them feel vested in the community. Um, you know, that their ideas matter and that their opinions are, are heard and uh. And so that's what I wanna bring to the table. It's just um that ability to be a communicator, to get with people in the community and let them know what's going on and. And uh to continue that positive momentum. I think we do have a lot of it. And again, I'm really encouraged by it, but I think we can do uh, we can just continue to build on that. And uh and, and just keep as many people involved and, and wanting to push the needle forward with us as, as much as possible.
Thank you, Joe Don. And Steve, we'll start with you on this question as we kind of, as I mentioned, go down and cycle through alphabetically uh each candidate, giving them a chance to go first and last and such. Um, the next question is, obviously workforce is a huge issue um in attracting and retaining talent is a huge issue as, as is population growth, which all plays into that. So as you look at moving into the potentially a city council role, how do you think the Council of Lofts can potentially attract and retain a more talented and educated workforce?
Um, I'll make sure my mic's on here. You can hear me. Okay, um, I, I would utilize the uh Iowa Western um to, to reach out through Iowa Western to our younger generation and, and. Get their input on a direction of, of what we need in our community. Um, I spent my lifetime in, in public service and also in, in trades. Uh, I think that uh Council Bless has the potential of growth in the next several years um around infrastructure and in business. And we're gonna need tradesmen and, and, and trades, uh you know, to build these facilities and to facilitate them. Um, workforce development, we, we have a lot of mid-level uh mid, you know, two-year degree jobs in the state of Iowa. That's what the direction that uh. Uh, we're, we're seeing in, in, in the workforce. Um, Iowa Western is a fantastic uh. On good, you know, a fantastic facility to uh facilitate the workforce. And uh like I say, I would work with Iowa Western, our community schools to put in line, uh, you know, the education and uh. Areas that we need to develop to uh bring younger families and retain them here in Council Bless.
Thank you, Steve. Uh, Joe Don, we'll go to you on the question of what can we do uh as a community to attract and retain a more talented and educated workforce?
Um, I, I think the question speaks to a large part of it is um, we have uh, we have a lot of talent right here in our community, but the reality is um, is that our. Um, some of our public schools are underperforming and uh, you know, from a city perspective, I think it's important to, you know. Work with the school board and with other people in the community on that. And so um, but, but the big piece is education. Um, you know, when I'm in the schools and I'm talking to teachers and students and administrators, um, the question comes up like, well, what can we do to incentivize these kids? Um, you know, we're sadly, I think we're, we're failing them from an educational standpoint. And I know clearly this isn't a school board uh campaign. Uh, but I think it's important that uh, you know, when we talk about attracting talent, I think there's a lot of talent right here in Council Bluffs. Uh, we need to incentivize these kids to um, to get that education, to um, to wanna, you know. Work and live here in Council Bluffs, provide them with as many opportunities as we can. Uh, but a huge piece of it is the education and just incentivizing these young kids. To want to see the light at the end of the tunnel, see the opportunities that are in front of them. And I think if they know that. You know, if I can work hard, if I can apply myself, if I take advantage of these opportunities, that um I can be rewarded for that here in Council Bluffs. And I, I believe that to be true. And so we have a, a lot of work to do. I think it needs to be pointed. You know, in large part to our youth, and I think that foundation will help foster an environment where other people will wanna come in and be attracted here and, and we'll be able to retain them.
Thank you, Joe Don. And that's one thing within our workforce development program, we do a lot of, we work very closely. I know Vicki and Eric are, are the superintendents are both on this call. Um, and we'll talk more on Thursday at the school board candidate forum on some of those issues. But. Um, I know, for example, the Diploma Plus One program has done some good things uh within CB schools. I know Eric with his CTE career technical education uh programming is doing some things as well. There's always more to do. And like you said, Joe Don, we, we realize that we continue to have to get down into middle schools even to really try to get those individuals early on. But I'll leave it at that uh cause that's a big, big lift. Lindsay, we'll now go to you uh for your comments on um how come Council Bluffs attract and retain a more talented and educated workforce?
Thank you. Um, so I'd like to touch on just a few things that we're currently doing. We have a lot of events that we put on here in Council Offs that are very attractive to outside communities. Um, for instance, Bike Night that uh Matt Johnson puts on from Barley's and um. We have, we have events like Pride that we have on the Hunter Block. I'm going to be a part of the Halloween um event that's going on in the Hunter Block this um next Monday. So I think uh doing events like that, that really attract outside communities is very helpful to our city because it lets them see what the sense of community that we have. Um, when I've been down on the Hunter Block for the Bike Night, we, there's so many people from outside communities that just, they comment on how great our, our area is and how attractive it is. And that they didn't realize what we had up to offer here. We do events, we've hosted RagBri here a couple of times that I've been a part of the planning and that as well. And I also participate in RagBri. Um, I think creating events that promote um attraction to our city is very important. Um, with respect to the schools, um like Jordan mentioned, um, you know, involvement with these children is actually very important. So. Um, I've mentioned before that I've been a part of teammates. I've had two children that I had for five years apiece. So I think um getting more people to um participate in programs like that. Where they, they see what, what our um adults are doing in our community and that promotes um, that promotes positive aspects for them. To want to participate in the community growing up. Um, when I have these kids and my teammates, uh, you know, I talk about what I do for a living. I talk about what my involvement is. And both of them that I've had, like I said, for five years apiece, they've asked how they can get involved. So I think just promoting um a positive. Adult figure to our children is really important, but primarily um, and I touched on this as well, getting businesses here that are attractive to young individuals. You know, um, I think Des Moines is like in the top two of um places for young professionals to live. And I think we're going towards that. I think we just need to um continually try and get the right businesses. Um, events, you know, seven one two initiative is doing a great job. Cheryl does a great job at promoting growth for our young, for our youth. Um, we have projects swinging up all over that are gonna bring young people to this um city. You know, I'm 36 and when I think about what attracts me to a city, it's the sense of community. And is there, is there a um, is there, can I work and play in the same area? Do I, am I, am I proud to be here? Yes. So those are the things that I would like to um continue to promote and continue. We, every year we get more and more events that um come to our city, and I think it's been really helpful. It brings a lot of dollars to our city as well that can.
Thanks, Lindsay. Um, I did wanna allow, as I mentioned before, uh what Chris Peterson did jump on uh the call and we did just finish a round of questions. So we'll allow Chris to provide up to two minutes of opening remarks um as the fourth camp council candidate. And then we'll jump back into Q and A. And the next question we'll start with will be with Joe Don. Um, but I did wanna afford Chris those two minutes of opening remarks uh to be fair and equitable uh to everyone. So Chris, thank you for joining us. Uh, the floor is yours for two minutes of opening remarks.
Thank you. Um, are we in this two minutes? Do you talk about our platform or just a little introductory? Sorry.
That's correct. Yep. And then we'll jump back into the Q and A.
All right, well, apologies I'm late. I'm the co-chair for our new strategic plan for Boys and Girls Club. So um, that was kind of pressing. So my name is Chris Peterson. I've lived at Council Bluffs um nearly all my life. Um, with K through 12 Councilless Community School Districts. Um, married to my wife Erin for 12 years. I have three kids, ten-year-old boy Landon and boy-girl twins Carter and Lila, who are eight. Um, currently the director of the Boys and Girls Club in Council Bluffs. I have been for the last 12 years. Um, and I've been the only director at the Boys and Girls Club in Council Bluffs. Uh, my wife and I own a small business in town in motion gymnastics. Um, we live here, we both work here and we're raising a family here. Um, why I'm running for city council is I think Council Bless is great. I love the culture. I love the diversity. I love the history. Um, it's got, it's a big city, but it's got a small-town vibe, um, which I really love. We have almost everything you would need in this community without having to go outside. Um, so that's one of the reasons I'm running. I'm very passionate about Council Bless. Um, the reasons I'm running, um, economic development. Knocking down barriers for small businesses. That's what made Council Bless great is our small businesses, physical responsibility, um figuring out how our tax dollars can work for us. Um, taxes are really important to everyone. And uh youth and family advocacy, they're our future generation. They're the voice, just like we were once as kids. So just showing those kids that, you know, there's a, there's things outside of Council Bless to be on, but come back here, be a leader, be productive, work, raise a family here. So that's kind of the short spiel on uh me and running for a city council.
Thanks, Chris. And then what we, what we've been doing is we've been just gone alphabetical order by last name by, for questions. So Joe Don is up to go first. You'll be up to go first. Next question, just so you know kind of how things have gone. Um, so we'll start back in with Q and A and Chris, you get a minute and a half, as you'll see with the timer. Uh, to respond to each question. Um, so Joe Don, we had a question from uh Doug Reed. So Joe Don, we had a question from Doug Reed, who's the Pot County Emergency Management Director. And he touches on obviously the importance of planning for economic security and development and such and how important it is. But his question is, as we face increasingly increasing frequency and of long term disasters, what are each of the candidates' commitments to investing and supporting emergency and disaster preparedness and mitigation funding and resources?
Well, that's a great question, and it's a super important question, and it's one that hits home to me. My family since probably the nineteen seventies has owned land along the Missouri River. Down off of Gifford Road, if you go down past the recycle center, and that's where I grew up. I I I grew up with my family down there on the weekends. We had some cabins along the river. I learned how to ride a dirt bike and we would bring our friends down there. We'd go boating, we'd. It was just really a treasured part of my my childhood memory. And in two thousand eleven, the flood came and just ate all of that up. Just devastated our our family and many families along that area. Flooding in particular, it can just be so devastating and literally just the the blink of an eye. You know, your whole livelihood, your childhood, your memories, you know, things that people worked really hard to build for their families can be washed away. And so it's kind of that old adage of, you know, it takes a long time for an oak tree to grow to its full potential, but it just takes thirty seconds to cut it down with a chainsaw. But we can do a lot to prepare. To mitigate some of that. And and so, yeah, I I do, I pledge to make a commitment on whatever we can do, you know, from a city stance standpoint. With, you know, still being fiscally responsible, but absolutely, we we live in a river town and it's going to be important for us to be prepared. And and to make sure that our, you know, we are paying attention to our levies as they get recertified here that we're adequately prepared for something like that to happen.
Thanks, Joe Don. And Chris, as I mentioned before, you were up next and with Doug's question regarding disaster mitigation, flooding mitigation, and the things along those lines being a river community and such.
Okay, so a lot to pay you back on, Joe Don. It's hard to prepare for an emergency, but knowing where we are at, Council Plus being in a known flood plain. Building on what we've had in place over the years, taking steps to ensure we're ready when it does happen, you can't. You can't really predict when it's going to happen. You kind of have a little bit of a sense of what we're facing. So being prepared, having the steps in place pre flood, post flood, and during flood. So that comes along with a financial resources team. And overall, being ready to go combat it. Again, it's hard, you have to be fiscally responsible, but I think there does have to be dollars put towards that because in my lifetime, we've seen a few floods, obviously the two thousand eleven one. They were terrible and working next to Salvation Army down here. We volunteered a lot of time to help Salvation Army get prepared to go down and feed the residents down there. So there has to be a level of preparedness. We can't put it on the back burner because we never know when these things are going to happen. So again, recap preparation. And just policies and procedures to go at it. And we we need a team to do it. It can't be a small group of people because you have to prepare for, prepare for the best and expect the worst.
Thanks, Chris. And Lindsay, that brings us to you to address the issue of hazard mitigation flooding and how you as a council candidate will address those items.
Thank you. So I think Chris kind of touched on this, but you know, the biggest thing is being proactive. So I would like to see, I kind of mentioned that I was on the disaster track, which is a little bit different, but having committees, we probably need to get secure committees in place that we actually go over our worst possible scenarios and having plans for each one of those scenarios. I'm not sure what we have currently with that, but I would like to see getting programs together that prepare for every possible scenario. So, you know, obviously making sure our levies are in check. I remember two thousand eleven, I offered many people to stay at my house at the time because they lived in the West End. And helped, you know, I volunteered down there. So not just, I don't want to be reactive. I want to be proactive and have programs set in place that set up for every, you know, maybe we have a group that covers one district and another one that covers another district and little little committees all over the place and have someone that kind of that promotes the whole, but have little committees all over the place to make sure that we have specific plans in action because it's going to probably happen again. Obviously, we don't want it to, but in making sure the levies are up to par is is a big concern. But that that would be my biggest, my biggest plan would be to have committees and plan for the worst.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Steve, that brings us to you to wrap up the conversation on hazard mitigation and flooding.
This is an area where I I worked for thirty years with the city and I bring extensive knowledge, I believe, and experience to this very issue. I was one that responded to the floods and other incidences within our community that needed mitigating. It's going to take, like many of them referred to, pre-planning. Educating our firefighters, the young ones, tabletops, working with our local fire department, police, health departments. Potawatomi County Health Department, that's a good question. Thank you for the question. Also, the state and federal level, we we practice NMS, we work with FEMA. We we as firemen, we we're prepared. We have a plan for flooding. And we put it into use in the last flood and and floods are are very damaging. We got to work with the Corps. Corps of Engineers, they're the ones that control the water flow down the river. Levies are all controlled by the by the Corps. We have responsibilities to repair and be able to lift the water from the bathtub side, this side going over back into the river. So there's many things that we can do. And we'll work together to get these done. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. And one thing I did want to note too is I know that Representative McConkey and Representative Segrist are on. So one thing the legislature also did this year in twenty twenty one was they provided some additional mitigation powers to counties to kind of bump it up to the level of what cities are able to do, and that's yet another opportunity for some additional assistance in that collaborative nature that you guys talked about with the state and federal as well. And along those lines, the next question, it's a good transition to that, and we'll start with Chris, is you know, obviously, working for the city council, that's one governmental entity. There's a lot of other ones at different levels. So can you talk about the importance and how you would go about working with other governmental entities at the local, state, and even federal level?
Yeah, so. Part of my job here at the Council Plus Club was when we first opened was community networking. So get out first, lay your foundation in the community. Get to know people, what they do, what services they provide and what you can bring back. So it'd be the same approach. You start small. You have to build your foundation, which is Council Plus, the community, the providers, people here. And then from there, you network up. Your local legislators, your local representatives, you've got to meet and talk with them. And bring, you know, the people's voice to them, talk, have good tough conversations with them, and then it it goes up. It's kind of like the chain of command in reverse. Start at the bottom, work your way up. But if you don't start working with your local representatives at the bottom floor and you skip right to the top floor, you're going to skip those important steps along the way. And that's kind of how I approach most things in life. You got to build your base. You don't build buildings from the top down. And that's my approach in most of my life. We got to start somewhere, build it, and keep having communication, whether it's the smallest person to all the way up to the governor. There's a lot of people in between and you can't leave those people out because those people have opinions, they have voices, and they have great ideas. So to recap that, that's pretty much it. It's a foundational approach. Start small and grow it. Thank you.
Thanks, Chris. And a same question now, Lindsay, to you, and it's how would you go about working with governmental entities, both our local ones here within Council Plus, to the county, to the state, to the federal?
Thank you. So I I kind of, I'll pay you back on Chris's a little bit, but I I do believe that we need to have collaboration at all levels. I think constant communication and feedback from our state and federal representatives is important. Many of the events I've gone to lately, I've heard, you know, our state representatives, US representatives speak, and it's important to see all different levels of of representation. I think just communicating and making sure they know what we, what our, what our community needs and we know what they would what they need from us. At the end of the day, I think we all need to work together. And it's not just, we're not just by ourselves and they're not just by themselves. I think, I think we all need to work together to to have our end goal be promoting a great community for us and communication within the community.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Steve, that then brings us to you on that question regarding how you would best work with other governmental entities at all levels.
One of the things that I I bring to the council is that I don't know everything. I will seek out the information within the city government, the experts within the different departments here, and when we can no longer handle the the capabilities, then we'll reach out to our our representatives at the state level, our Senator Dan Dawson, Charlie McConkey, Brent Segrist, and the rest. We also need to appreciate their their expertise, but also rely back onto our local control and what's best for our communities. I think, like I say, having an open mind, being approachable, discussing issues across the the lines of of partisanship and also doing what's right for our community. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And Joe Don, that brings us to you to wrap up the conversation on working with other governmental entities at the local, state, and federal level.
Yeah, thank you. Super important. Communication is usually always the biggest factor. It's the biggest factor in our relationships in our neighborhoods. And it's the same case in working with other government entities, including the city, working with the county, the city and the county, working with the school boards and just knowing who those people are and you know, having having those conversations with them about what their issues are gives us such an opportunity to to have a perspective and and to bring that to the table with what we're doing. So you know, we all have a role to play. And in my experience and my my personal and professional experience, I've been a part of these efforts where there's a ton of moving parts and you're working with different entities. And so you've you've got to be able to communicate. And I think that's something that I I really do bring to the table is that ability to listen to people, to understand where they're coming from, and then take that perspective to the job and the task at hand. But working with other entities and having an open line of communication with with all of them is incredibly important. And so we need to continue to elect people that have that open mind, that accessibility, that open communication and that are, you know, have have been successful in communicating with a lot of different moving parts.
Thank you, Joe Don. That brings us to our next question. And Lindsay, we will start with you and then move down the list. As you know, this position's nonpartisan. Cities offices are nonpartisan offices just as a chambers and nonpartisan organization. So how will you as a candidate and if elected as a city council member, make sure that partisanship is not embedded in the nonpartisan office?
Thank you. Like you said, nonpartisan, I I actually really like that aspect of the city council. You know, at a city level, the issues that do come up in a lot of partisan questions don't apply. I think it's important to keep in mind and listen to what the people of the city and the community want and focus on that. Focus on our comprehensive plan, focus on what we need as a city, not necessarily on what not being clouded by judgment from anyone else about what your what your partisanship is. You know, like I said, it's a very important to me that that isn't a part of this. And I I I promote or I accept every person based whether they're, whatever their party is. It really does not apply to this position. So with that, I just, I would say that I'm open to every and every walk or every walk of life and will promote whatever the city needs regardless of partisanship.
Thank you, Lindsay. Steve, same question to you is how will you make sure that a partisanship does not become embedded at all in this nonpartisan office?
I think it's very important that we keep partisanship out of our our city council and our local elections. I've worked up in the Gibraltar Neighborhood Association. I've sat on the board here and helped start it several years ago. And we've always kept partisanship out of our our organization up here. And I get along great with every neighbor, even when we have contentious issues that crop up in our neighborhood. My neighbors know that they come to me and talk to me. I love going out into the community. That's the way I like to campaign. I talk to everybody. Always have and always will. As a firefighter, we didn't ask anybody their race, color, religion, or or political affiliation when we were out there helping them. We did, we did the community service that we we took an oath to do, and that's what I intend to do from the city council. Thank you.
Stephen, Joe Don, now same question to you as to how to keep partisanship out of the nonpartisan office.
Yeah, I mean, first off, I think it's extremely important, the nature of it being nonpartisan. It allows for people's ideas to be judged on their merit and not from where they align on the political spectrum. It keeps the focus on what's best for the people and the taxpayers. When you go out and you hold a door for somebody in the community, when you talk to your neighbors, when you engage with with people. That camaraderie and that, you know, those relationships. There there's so much more rich, you know, they they mean so much more. When when your political affiliation or, you know, particularly on the city council, that that partisanship. It's just really important that we that we keep it nonpartisan. It, like I said, it just allows for those ideas to be judged on their merit. It allows for an open line of communication with people. You know, when we're out campaigning and talking to people, it allows for us to just engage them on, hey, what are you going through? What are your experiences? What do you think the challenges are? And then we can really take that and just keep an open mind and a and a clear perspective on what are the ideas and what are the solutions to some of their problems that we can bring to the table without the influence or, you know, any preconceived notions or biases about political affiliation.
Thank you, Joe Don. And Chris, we'll wrap up with you on the nonpartisan and partisan, the nonpartisan nature of the office.
I think partisanship is applicable in some situations, but at the local city level, it's not. At the end of the day, we're all residents of Council Plus, so we're all one. It's about the sum of all parts. I don't need to agree with everybody and they don't need to agree with me, but when we disagree on things that help the city, that's how you can come to a solution. We're, we all live here. We all take pride in our city and that's what we want. So when you leave partisanship out of it and it's just two people talking or smaller people talking, it's for the greater good of the community. So partisanship in the city race. It's it's not beneficial. We don't want to be divided as a community. We want to be united. There's a common goal at the end of the day, you know, make Council Plus great. Great place to work, live, raise a family, have great amenities. So if we can disagree and agree, but come together as one with everybody's voice, again, like I said, it's the sum of all parts.
Thank you, Chris. And the next question, we'll start with Steve, and we're going to combine two questions. It's Steve, what do you see as the biggest opportunity and also the biggest challenge facing Council Plus and why?
I think the biggest opportunity we have in in Council Plus is our West Broadway corridor system. Omaha is developing their downtown and their midtown and their landlocked to the east. And I think that Council Plus needs to really truly go to work, and and there is a plan there, I know, but go to work to develop that western Broadway corridor and and really become an extension of Omaha at a greater pace. I think one of the biggest difficulties we have in our community is sometimes getting past the impression that Omaha puts on us at times, you know, they look down on us a little bit. They look down on us a little bit and we need to push back on that. We're, this is a great community. I lived here for my entire life. My family is fourth generation Council Plus kids. And, and I know the history of this town, what we're about and where we're going. And we have more potential on that west end of Council Plus than we ever had in, in, probably a hundred years. And we need to capitalize on that. We need to get young families in here to invest into our community. And we need to go to work to make the housing affordable for those families to buy and stay and invest into our community and our schools. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve. And Joe Don, we go to you now for the biggest challenge and biggest opportunity facing the Council of Community.
Yeah, thank you. So I see our biggest opportunity as our people, in particular, our youth, the, the biggest opportunity we have in really any community have is the individuals within it and the youth and, and what we're doing as a community and as a city. That's going to ensure that these kids have an opportunity. I really do think our biggest opportunity is in educating them and it's in retaining them. It's in empowering people in our community to help take our city forward. I know we have probably some school administrators listening in, so I'm, I'm just a really rough statistic here. But we graduate probably between a thousand or maybe as many as fifteen hundred kids every year in Council Bluffs. And, and there's a lot of talented kids. And so the biggest challenge, I think, for the second part of the question is what we're doing to retain them. It, it really is a multifaceted issue. There's many problems, you know, associated with it. Education's a piece, the workforce development, job opportunities, housing, infrastructure. But I think the biggest challenge is just what we can do to really allow as, as many people as possible, allow them the opportunity to invest their, their resources and have an opportunity to, to, to run small businesses here and to give those kids and those youngsters an opportunity to be educated and, and work in the city, a place where they feel safe and supported and they're allowed to be creative in what they're doing.
Thank you, Joe Don. And Chris, to you, biggest challenge, biggest opportunity for the community?
Yeah, I think our biggest challenge is growth and retention. Our population hasn't grown by more than a hundred. I, I know in the last at least thirty years, getting people, attracting people to move here, retaining people, getting former residents to come back, kids that leave and go after school to come back here and start a family. So that's our, our challenges. Our opportunities, as Joe Don said, the youth are the opportunity. We have fantastic programs in the community school districts to get these kids ready for the future, well ahead of pace as most of us went through. We do have more opportunity to bring businesses in. We have so many barriers. We, as a city, need to do better at not turning our backs, people coming in and hitting, hitting them with a list of, this is what we need first for you to start a business. We need to be welcoming and have conversation first before we slap all these reprimands and restrictions on why. Because that's, as Steve brought, it's easy, they, they'll just go across the river. So we gotta stop losing people across the river, businesses that bring jobs, that bring families, that are potentially bringing former Council Plus residents back. So if we don't start playing ball on the other side of the river, they're gonna go over there or they're gonna go, they're gonna go east, which is what they've been doing. So that I think is one of the biggest threats currently right now with Council.
Thank you, Chris. And that brings us to you, Lindsay, to close us out on biggest challenge, biggest opportunity.
Okay, yeah, so the biggest opportunity I think we have is the West Broadway Corridor going on currently. You know, I've been a part of that since its origin and I'm really proud of it. We're starting to see results on that. That is, it's going to make that area of town more attractive. It's bringing more, it's kind of more growth through our city. It's going to bring affordable housing. It's gonna, it's gonna bring transportation. That's, I think, our biggest opportunity. The biggest challenge, I think, one is, I think, you know, getting our community to believe in what the city is doing. So sometimes we don't always see the results initially and that can be frustrating to people. They, they're not really certain what we're doing or if we're actually have their best interests. But, you know, at the end of the day, we're all working really hard and we have, every month we have, we, last month, we had eight new cases that came across our city planning. And so, you know, with that, I, I see everything that's coming as far as our zoning issues and new projects that come to kind of our city. So I think getting our, getting our citizens to believe in what we're doing and have, and being, trusting that we're doing what's best for them. And then to touch on that too, is just our growth, getting people to want to live here, getting people to want to come across the river to us versus going across the river to Omaha. And, you know, with, with what I just said, with the plant, West Friday corridor and all the other projects we have, those are actually really in support of bringing people here. And I'd like to just see more businesses come to our city and more, more people moving here and retaining those people.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Joe Don, we'll start with you at, for this question and I'm going to combine two again. First is a yes, no question. Second is a follow-up to that question. First is, have you taken the opportunity to meet with the mayor and the other city council members for their guidance? And second, how do you envision yourself fitting in, working with the mayor and city council if elected?
The first part is yes, I have met with the city council members. I've met with the mayor. And how I see myself fitting in is, I, I think I'm a good fit for this, this job. I've had a good conversation with Mayor Walsh. I think he's done a lot of good things for Council Bluffs and has been, he's been involved for a long time. So, and I'm sure Mr. Walsh would tell you and the other council members that you can't please everybody. And so what I want to do as a part of the, the city council is challenge ideas. And having that dialogue and having that back and forth, you know, I, I know a lot of the folks on city council and have talked with them, we certainly don't agree on everything. And that's a good thing, you know, keeping that dialogue up, keeping that back and forth going, having those vibrant conversations and that lively debate is what allows you to, to progress forward. And so I see myself as a good fit. I see myself being able to challenge some of the ideas and for all of us to continue to challenge the status quo and just to keep pushing the needle forward. And so I, I think I have a lot, a great deal of respect for those guys to be, you know, to have put themselves out there, to be in the position that they are, including the mayor. And so I see myself excited to work with them, excited to challenge them on ideas and to kind of keep the, keep the needle moving forward for our town.
Thank you, Joe Don. And Chris, same question to you. Have you had the opportunity to meet with the mayor and other city council members? And then two, how do you envision yourself fitting in with them if elected?
Well, I have met with some city council members. I have not met with the mayor yet. That's coming up. What I wanted to do first was get out and meet with people in the community. Business owners, police and various people and see what their opinion is of the city, what their opinion is of how city council's doing. So I wanted to start there again, from the bottom up approach, because ultimately the citizens are a voice to the city council. So that's kind of what I've been doing. And as it gets closer to election, that's what I wanted to come up with. And meet with Mayor Walsh. How I see myself fitting in, I see myself fitting, fitting in well, but not well as a yes man. Anybody that knows me, I challenge the process on a day-to-day basis and work and personal. I don't like to agree. If you agree with everybody, then we're one voice and, and then that gets heated over time. So you have to challenge your counterparts. You have to challenge your cohorts and anybody who come across, if you disagree, you do it respectfully and then you have that conversation. Because if you want to move the train in the right direction to keep growing like Council Plus is with its opportunities, you have to have somebody to push back to say, well, let's look at it this way. What about this perspective? If we all think alike, then we all become robots and what's been done in the past stays the same. So again, like Joe Don said, you gotta challenge the status quo and just keep it going.
Thank you, Chris. And Lindsay, same question to you. Have you had a big opportunity to meet with the mayor and council members? And how do you see yourself fitting in if elected?
Uh, thank you. Yes, the, the answer is yes. So I have known Mayor Walsh since I've actually moved here. I meet with him frequently. You know, I was approached by Tom Handafan and a few others to run initially. We share a lot of ideas, not always, you know, I don't see eye to eye on everything, but that's, I think that's important. So Mayor Walsh and I have a lot of conversations about issues going on in the city with the council members. I, you know, I, some of them are very good friends. I've met with many of them or all of them. You know, back in, even a year ago, Chad Hannon and I would sit at the dinner table and have, we'd debate on issues, let's say about the YMCA and things like that. We wouldn't see eye to eye, but we could have an adult conversation and talk about our pros and cons. And I think that's really important. I am not, I think Chris just said it, not a yes woman. So I, I definitely have my own opinions and reasons why, especially when it applies to what's best for our city. So I think having those tough conversations and being able to support my decisions and reasons why is, is very important. You know, I, you know, as a woman, I think it's really important for that diversity on the, on the council. We won't have that after Melissa's term is done. That just brings a lot of diversity. It might bring a little bit different of an approach. I, you know, like I said, I am friends and acquaintances with everyone on the board and I appreciate their opinions and decisions. But I, I believe that I can bring a very diverse aspect and a very educated and diverse approach.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Steve, we'll close out with you here. Have you had a chance to meet with mayor and council members yet? And then how do you envision yourself fitting in if elected?
Yes, I've sat down with the mayor. I've also talked to a few of the city council, not all. I've spent my time out in the neighborhoods, talking to the citizens, kind of like Chris, starting from the bottom up. Finding what direction that they would, and the input from the community. It is their, their seat that I will be filling. As far as working with the, with the council and mayor and the, the city management, I'll fit in good. I lived in a fire station for thirty, for thirty years. Worked on teams out of that, that, you know, when we go on, on the back of that truck, we're, we're a unit and we work together. We didn't always agree, but our final outcome was always a, a common goal and we, we would work towards that direction. I plan to, to make this full-time job. I will come to the council prepared. I will read the packets coming out. I'll study them. I'll reach out to the experts in the areas to find the answers that I might not know about. And bring collaborative discussion and, and move the city in a direction that works for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Since you kind of answered this question, I will give you a chance to answer it at the end, but we'll start again with Joe Don. But it's a follow-up. It fits in nicely with what you just said. For Cindy Keefly asked in this chat, what resources do you plan to use to prepare for council meetings? So Steve kind of hit on some of those, but Joe Don, what do you see as being some critical resources to make sure you're prepared going into council meetings?
So really for me, it, it always kind of falls back to communication and just having an open line of communication. There's certainly things that we're not experts in. And so to bring some of that humility to the position and just say, you know what? I need to talk with not only the department heads and the experts, you know, because they may be the expert on the topic. But, you know, we're all humans and we all can have our biases. So it, it's about talking with the neighbors in the community that are affected by whatever's going on in our city or whatever projects are being proposed. And, you know, talking with the people in the community that are affected, talking with the department heads and the experts and the situations. And then talking to really as many people as you can. I've always found that when, when I really want to get a well-rounded idea on something and really get, you, you know, my, my head straight, my head wrapped around what the particular issue is and, and how to approach it and just the best case scenario. The more people you can talk to, the more opinions you can get, the more perspective you can gain, the better off you are. So that's my pledge to the people of Council Bluffs as far as, you know, the, the resources and what you need to be prepared for the council meetings and for the decisions that you make is to talk to as many people as possible to gain that perspective and, and then to bring that to the table with a fair and honest approach.
Thank you, Joe Don. And Chris, same question to you as to how do you think you would best be prepared to go into any, any, any council meeting?
Big thing is research. I've learned a lot over the past few months researching topics that I didn't know much about that were brought to us in speaking engagement. Case studies, sometimes you have to go outside of where you live to see what worked in other communities. Same scenarios. I know, but working down here in the Lincoln campus, we've had people from all over the country come down and do case studies on how this campus works, because it's a, at one point was one of a kind. So you have to do your homework. You have to do your research. You can talk to past council members if they'll talk to you, past mayors. Again, there's other communities with the same problems, networking with them. And then again, all the, all the local officials here, everybody in city hall, everybody that's working for the greater good. But you have to put the time in and you have to do your homework. You can't discipline it. So I'm kind of one of those guys that have a thirst for knowledge. I'll get a random thought in my head and I'll just research it. So I know a lot about little, if you ever talk to me. And that's, that's just because I always want to learn. I'm a lifelong learner. And that's what's made me successful thus far. I don't have, I won't have all the answers. But there's a wealth of knowledge in this community and around, so communication is going to be the biggest thing on top of research and homework.
Well, thank you, Chris. And to your comment, I've been known for that too, knowing a little bit about a lot of things, so I can identify with that. Lindsay, next is to you on that question is what resources would you plan to use to best be prepared for any given council meeting?
So I would approach a council meeting similar to how I approach our planning commission meetings. So when we get a packet the week before, Chris given sends it out to us, I will go through every case, research everything about it. When I, there's something I'm not particularly familiar with, I will go to that site and take a look at it and see, you know, if it was like an amendment or something like that, I'll go and check it out to make sure I know exactly what the scenario is. If I have any questions, I'll reach out to our other commission members or to Chris himself or, you know, anyone really that applies to that situation. Dick Wade is also a good resource. So what I like to do is just make sure I know exactly what I'm going to be looking for, especially as a chair, because I'm the one reading everything off and making sure that the meeting is flowing the way it should. So research, like Chris mentioned, and then for this, there's more communication with the city members. So if there is a specific area that it affects or people that it affects, making sure that I'm communicating and listening. I think that's the biggest thing is to listen and take that into account. Listening to the people is actually what's the biggest, biggest thing here and making sure that what we're doing is correct. You know, talking to the council members, there's communication that can be had on all surfaces, talking to Mayor Walsh, you know, seeing what, what their opinions are, seeing if I agree, kind of diving in and doing all my research for that.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Steve, as I mentioned, you kind of talked about this a little bit in your previous response, but I want to let you answer and add anything you may want to as well.
Thank you, Drew. Coming into the council with an open mind and the humility to know that I don't know everything. Making this full-time job, like I say, I, I'm retired. I'm committed to the, to a city that was good to me. And I will do the work. I'm kind of known as a workaholic anyway, so I don't sleep much. So I'll, I'll be definitely researching out the, the particular issues, reaching out to the community, seeing if it is a good fit for the area or whatever the, the problem is in the, in the situation in our neighborhood. And getting out and talking to people. I'm just going to be an honest, straightforward, you know, open-minded and informed city councilman. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Our next question, we'll start with you, Chris, and it kind of has something to do with what you all kind of talked about for research. But what do you see as your official role if elected to city council with the city staff?
Um, the official role is an extension of the city staff, whether it, you know, be, Um, the official role, um, is an extension of the city staff, whether it, you know, be, um, planning development, parcel recreation. You, you help, you gather information from the citizens with their voice and their questions and their concerns. And you're that liaison and you can take it up the chain and say, there, we're going to be more accessible to those department heads as maybe somebody off the street. So we're, we're the footholds. We're out there gathering these things for, because we are the voices of people essentially. And we can hold court with those department heads as other people may not. Uh, we can do it in a professional, respectful way. Um, as opposed to if I'm upset about something that's going on down on my street, um, people tend to run hot. Sometimes they go up there and they want to yell and cross the gas and, and those people generally get tuned out. So there's got to be, again, the liaison between the people and the department heads. And we are just the microphone for the citizens. That's what we do. Questions, concerns, we take it to the top. We have the tough conversations because we have a little bit of pull being on city council. Um, and that's how I see my roles with the department heads and vice versa. They give us good information. We have to take it back and convey it the right way. With the facts that we were given to the people asking the questions. It can't be a game of telephone where the message is changing. Um, as it goes to three, four, five people, it has to be direct messaging, but you know, we are the vessel to share that message.
Thanks, Chris. And Lindsay, on to you. What do you see as your role with interaction and even potential oversight of, of the staff of, uh, the city staff?
So I believe, um, Chris kind of touched on this too, as being a liaison between the, uh, the citizens of the town and, uh, making sure that we're relaying that information back and we're portraying what we want as a city. So we've heard a lot of citizens talk about, you know, what, what do we do for the elderly? What do we do for affordable housing? And listening to what they're saying and applying that to what we as a city can, uh, feasibly do. Well, you know, making sure that we're spending our tax dollars correctly, making sure that we're get, we're growing as we need to. And making sure we're basically, you know, listening to what everyone, everyone is saying and what they need and what their, um, feelings are.
Thank you, Lindsay. And, uh, Steve, that brings us to you, uh, for your comments on what you view your role with staff, uh, interaction and oversight would be if elected.
Um, I'm going to bring you, uh, a perspective that, uh, being, uh, coming from public sector worker. Um, and working around the different, uh, uh, departments, you know, uh, within the city. Um, where sometimes I'm going to have to be a support, their support, uh, take what they're doing out to the, to the community and, and explain and be the voice to the community of why things are going in a direction with, with a particular, uh, department or department head. The other time I'll be oversight. Um, we'll be looking at, uh, the budgets of the, of the departments and, uh, making decisions in a direction that best suits, does it taxpayers of this community. Um, I want to be open. I want to be there, uh, to support and to oversee and, uh, move our community as a whole in a direction that's best for all of us. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Joe Don, we'll close out with you on what you see your role with, uh, interacting and working with staff of the city.
Well, I think it's a, uh, obviously a really important role, um, to me, um. You know, I think the best way to approach it is, uh, from a, a place of humility and just an effort to educate myself, uh, with what people do. Um, you, you know, I've been able to do that at the schools. Um, I've been able to do that in my professional, um, career. You know, I, I spend a lot of time for, for instance, in a transaction that says, hey, I've got to relay information to, um, you know, my client about what the other party said. And the, the entire goal is to, uh, bring everybody to that compromise and that agreement. So for me, um, it's sitting down with people, city staff and saying, hey, um, talk to me about what, what you go through. What is your day-to-day and, and what do you, um, what's your experience and, and, uh, what can we do to better serve you? And, uh, and then I think, uh, Chris said it well, when, you know, he said that, uh, we're, we're a microphone for the voice of the people. And so to, uh, be a representative that truly represents, uh, what people are saying and what, uh, our community needs are. And then working with our department heads to understand their perspective and understand what they go through. Um, and then work, uh, in, in both directions to hold each other accountable, uh, for them to hold us accountable, for the community to hold us accountable and, uh, for us to, uh, just really act as that liaison and, and to make sure that we're respectful and, uh, that we're responsible for that communication piece.
Thank you, Joe Don. And we'll start this next question with you, Lindsay. And infrastructure is the top of everyone's mind. It's something you hear about, about locally, but obviously they're talking a ton about it out in DC as well. And at the state as well with broadband and some other issues. Um, can you talk a little bit about the infrastructure needs in the community and how to best address those?
Um, I think that the infrastructure needs, we, we need to continue to, um, promote the, the growth in our city. I think we need to continue, um, to make sure that we're promoting the right, the right businesses in the right areas. Um, you know, with respect to like the levees and everything, I think we need to, like I said before, make sure that we're getting, um, communities involved and make sure that we're getting, that it's not just on the city. Make sure that the community itself is also a part of that. Um, I think that's really important. I'd like to see more involvement from our, um, community. And I think we can get those programs going. Um, I think it just takes the right person to make sure that we're getting that going.
Thanks, Lindsay. And Steve, we'll go to you on the infrastructure needs for the community. And, um, I'll just remind everyone too, like with infrastructure, it's, it's roads, it's bridges, it's water, wastewater, it's the levees, it's broadband, it's a litany of different things. So it's a big issue. Um, so what do you see as some of, um, those biggest needs and how to address them?
Um, like you say, infrastructure is a broad issue. It's something that, uh, I'm very interested within the city. Um, one of the big things I see is, uh, is a potential problem that we need to look at and be shovel-ready on. Uh, so that if they ever do pass a bill at the, at the federal level, that we'd be, uh, able to access some federal funds and, uh, and use it appropriately. The North Broadway corridor with the, uh, Indian Creek watershed is something that is, uh, uh, was put in in the forties and fifties. And that's an area of population that, uh, uh, on the North Broadway corridor that traverse that creek every day, uh, to their homes, their businesses. And, uh, they're crossing bridges that, uh, may not be adequate. Um, I think there needs to be a study done of that, uh, that whole infrastructure up in that area, uh, the Indian Creek watershed all the way through town. Um, we've had areas that needed to be rebuilt already. A lot of people don't even realize that that creek bottom run all the way to underneath, uh, the downtown part of Council Bluffs. And we need to, uh, uh, address that, be shovel-ready if, if those needs are up there. Also, just the public works area of the community, part of infrastructure is taking care of the infrastructure that we have. And the water problems we have in the West End, sometimes it's just debris clogging up, uh, the, the water, uh, outlets that need to go to the levee. So, uh, cleaning our streets, keeping up our, our, uh, daily maintenance also. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Joe Don, on to you, onto the massive issue that is infrastructure and some of the key needs we have and how we can address them.
Yeah, you said it, Drew. It's massive. I feel like we could probably have a Zoom meeting for ninety minutes on just infrastructure. Um, it, it's something that I'm learning a lot about. Um, it's obviously a big need in our, our city. Um, some of the things that stand out to me that I think, uh, you know, are important to address, they're fundamental. When we talk about growth for Council Bluffs and what we're going to do with, with all of these other things, without a strong foundation, without, you know, strong roads. And, uh, um, our, our wastewater infrastructure, um, really, these are the things that are fundamental to be able to even, you know, continue on with, with some of those other ideas. So three hundred million dollars in deferred maintenance on, on the roads. Um, it just seems like, uh, we've taken that maintenance approach. And so we're sort of putting a Band-Aid on it. Um, it, it's a great big number. So, um, when I look at something that's massive like that, I think, how can we break that down? And let's maybe take a look at like the worst fifteen percent. Can we pick something like that off and go to work on it? Um, and do more than just maintain some, but try to attack some of the, those needs. Um, you know, in the West End with, with a lot of that old orangeburg clay pipe, um, you know, it's a huge issue. Uh, w- we could take a look at potentially doing something, um, like a time of transfer inspection. So, uh, you know, when, when the city goes in and inspects the mains and maintainses that and takes care of their piece of it, giving the homeowner the opportunity, uh, while the hole's already dug in the ground to, to take a look and see, uh, what their needs are too, and try to give people an opportunity, um, and help them as much as we can. But, uh, yeah, there's some serious issues. Um, I know my time's up, but, um, even retention pond, retention pond, um, to try to help that stormwater rain drainage. Um, these are huge issues and definitely, um, need to be addressed in our city.
Thanks, Joe Don. Um, Chris, and then we'll wrap up with you on this infrastructure topic on some of the big issues and how to address them.
Uh, we have to take more aggressive stance on it. Look, look what's happened across the country, roadways, bridges, everything that we know. Forties, fifties and sixties, we didn't maintain. Um, we put Band-Aids on a lot of things. What happens when you put a Band-Aid on something? It wears off. Um, I'm talking with the waterworks boys, um, ninety percent of their time, they're out fixing their Band-Aids. Um, they're not replacing, they're, they're replacing piping from eighteen hundreds in some cases. But it's a lot of Band-Aids because people want to get back and go and they need their water. So, you know, when one, when one day it breaks, have, you know, a large section of the cities without water. We just have a lot of hospitals, like three weeks ago, everybody wanted to know, I had brown water. We'll hospital force a fast fix. It's going to happen again, especially with water flow issues. Um, with our water issues, we got to address the sewers and curves. There's a lot of busy streets in the West End that the curves are out, they're deteriorating. I, I put a Facebook post out, infrastructure a couple of weeks ago and a laundry list of addresses and streets come out. Well, why are some of these conversations you'd be having, why is North Broadway was one of them? Everybody, they nicknamed their potholes. Why aren't we talking about these potholes? Why aren't we going down and look at them? And should we fix this street first over this street? Now there's an argument with that. Who's street's more important? But Band-Aids, you know, they don't fix potholes. And if we don't take an approach now, we're going to be in debt and so far behind the time. We're not going to catch up because if you're not with the times now, you're already behind April. So, um, yeah, we got to take drastic steps forward. To have all these great things, but if you don't have the infrastructure, the great things don't work out.
Yeah, thanks, Chris. And the only thing I'll note is on that, it's, it is a huge issue. And there's a litany of different things because you might say like this area of town is a huge need. Well, it's not just Council Bluffs that controls that. It might be the state and federal DOT that has a lot of say in that too. So there's a lot of different things that come into it. It's never as easy as it seems, just as that issue being so large is never as easy as it seems. So thank you. This most likely will be our last question, depending on how fast it goes, because I want to give you guys time for closing comments. Uh, but we'll start with Steve. And Steve, can you just define your leadership style?
Yes, uh, I, I believe that, uh, leadership needs to be one that, uh, you lead with your ears and not your mouth. Uh, I believe in, in empowering people around me to do what they do best. Uh, I've worked in, uh, the private sector as a journeyman electrician running jobs, uh, over the years. Uh, I ran up to, uh, a hundred electricians at one time and coordinating that work, uh, with some of the arduous people on earth, uh, construction workers is very difficult. But, uh, I did that through being open, uh, empowering them to do the best job that they could do. Um, when they take ownership of, of, uh, the part of the building that they're wiring and have input, then they care more and they get more done during the day. And that's the way I kind of lead, uh, is by empowering people around me, listening and, uh, working harder than they work. Not asking anybody to do anything that I wouldn't do myself. Thank you.
Thanks, Stephen. Joe Don, same question to you. Uh, can you define for us your leadership style?
Yeah, um, I have, I have continually found myself in a position of leadership amongst groups that I've been in. Um, whether that be a sports team, um, you, you know, with counseling youth, uh, through my church and summer programs. Um, and, and really my style is just, um, it, it's, it's in part motivational. Um, I like to find out what makes people tick and, uh, and, you know, seek out those ways that I can inspire them and keep them going and, and encourage them. Um, everybody has a different personality, obviously, and we all are motivated by different things. So to me, um, I, I really like that aspect of, of communication and particularly, uh, on a city council level is to find out, you know, what people's styles are and where they're coming from. And then how I can, uh, how I can serve them and motivate them and be a support system for them. And so I think taking that approach, um, has, has really allowed me a lot of opportunities in my life and has brought me to that leadership position, uh, whether it's in my job and my, my, uh, career or even in my family. Um, and just being able to be that glue that holds people together. And, uh, and that's just based on, uh, discernment, being trustworthy and being honest with people and making sure that people know that, uh, they can rely on me and that, uh, I'll come to the call and, uh, be there to help.
Thanks, Joe Don. And Chris, that brings us to you. Can you define your leadership style for the group?
Yeah. So I took strength fighters a long time ago and it really didn't carry much weight because I was young. I was like twenty-six. Um, so then a couple of years ago, uh, when I was a member of CB class leadership, uh, class thirty-two, we did strength fighters again. And after being in a leadership role, you know, for over ten years, it kind of, it sank in. Um, what a leader to me is, so I've kind of come up with the three F's. I'm firm, I'm fair, but I'm flexible. Um, you can be firm in decisions. You have to be fair in those decisions and you have to be flexible because things change on a dime. Um, I, when I say my door is always open, my door is always open with purpose. We don't need to meet. We don't do drive-by meetings. Um, we have to have a purpose in every meeting. Um, and then I leave my example. Um, I'm not going to make my employees here, the boys and girls, go do something I wouldn't do. Um, so I'm out on the floor with them, but I empower them. They have to make decisions. They have to make mistakes to learn and grow. I've had to make mistakes to be a better leader. Um, and that goes across the board in anything I've ever done in life. So you have to empower people to want, to learn and be leaders, to be an effective leader. But you can't mark orders. You can't talk down. You have to get in the trenches with these people and do the same thing. Cause ultimately the end result of that, there's a buy-in now, right? He's my boss, but he's down here doing the same thing I'm doing. We're, we're one, we're a team.
Thanks, Chris. And Lindsay will, uh, wrap that question on leadership style up with you.
Sure. Um, so I, you know, I, I like to listen for one, first and foremost, um, and kind of read the room and know my audience. So in my professional life, um, I talk to doctors, hospital staff all day long. It's very important, especially in procedural areas to know who you're talking to and understand what they're, how they like to communicate. So that's one of the biggest things that I like to focus on is knowing who I'm talking to and how they like to be approached. Um, you know, I, I prefer to delegate to, um, those that I can show their, use, utilize their strengths. And, um, also a teacher, um, you know, in, uh, in any role I've really had in the hospital systems, I learn very quickly. Um, and then I'm usually the point of contact. So being available is a big, is a big thing to me. Um, I've taken calls, you know, at eight PM when I'm off work about, you know, a cardiac procedure. So, you know, the same, the same role applies here, um, being, uh, knowledgeable and, um, functional. Showing up, knowing exactly what we're talking about and having the background education for that. Um, I really think that's important, but primarily, um, I mean, Chris touched on this as well, is being a team. Um, I, you know, I want to be available to anyone and, and whoever, whenever they need it and communicating across the board.
Thank you, Lindsay. And as I mentioned to each of you, as you kind of wrap up on our one and a half hours, uh, we'll start with Joe Don. But I did want to give each of you up to a minute, uh, for some closing remarks to wrap things up before we conclude. So Joe Don, we'll start with you.
All right, great. Um, really to me, um, it, it comes down to my why and, uh, why I'm running and why I do what I do. Um, and, and that is about my family. Um, it, it's about where I come from in Council Bluffs and my, and my family that's been such a big support system for me. And, uh, most importantly now, it's about my, um, my wife and my daughter and, uh, just the opportunities that lay ahead of us for Council Bluffs. Um, I'm passionate about moving, uh, in the right direction for Council Bluffs. Um, I think, um, we, we've seen, uh, honestly, we've seen a little bit of stagnation in terms of some of our growth. And, uh, I want to be a part of the city, not to, uh, I want to be a part of the city, not to uh play a role in, in, you know, too much of that. Um, you know, I don't want to participate in that. I want to uh allow that to be relaxed and let the uh, let the citizens of Council Bluffs and let the people who are willing to bet on themselves and invest in this town, um, have a voice and, and uh allow their creativity to shine.
Thank you, Joe Don. Uh, Chris, we'll go to you uh for your closing comments.
Um, what I think that'd be a good fit um to be on city council is just kind of where I've came from, where I've been and where I am now, um, the roles that I've taken in the community through the Boys and Girls Club have provided me the opportunities and more insight to see what we need. Um, I believe in Council Bluffs. I believe where we can go. We are an all-American city, but I don't think we're quite there yet. We can be better. Uh, I was kind of describing, it's like a diamond in the rough. It shines a little bit, but we can make it shine brighter. Um, it should be a destination spot. It already is, but we can blow this thing up. And people are like, wow, that's Council Bluffs. But it starts with the people you put in the, in the seats. Um, that believe, that have passion, that work here, are raising families here. They got sweat equity in their community. So it's not going to be easy, but you have to be dedicated and passionate. And that's one thing I don't lack is passion for Council Bluffs.
Thank you, Chris. Lindsay, we go to you for your closing comments.
Okay, yes. So why I feel like I would be a good fit is I have um sincere passion for Council Bluffs. Um, I really think it's a beautiful city. I I'm enamored by where we've come from, where we are and where we're going. Um, I, like I said, I'm not from here, so I choose to live here every day. I moved here for the community and a sense of acceptance. Um, I'm very proud of the city and all that we're doing. Um, my experience on the city um planning commission, I believe is very helpful in this role. Um, with that great background of where, you know, what we need to do to get where we're going. Um, and I'm just a really proud citizen of the city and I would love to be a part of the city council.
Thank you, Lindsay. And Steve will wrap up with you for your closing comments.
All right, thank you. Uh, first of all, I'd like to thank Drew and uh the chamber for, once again, for hosting this. Uh, also Lindsay, Joe and, or Joe Don and Chris. Uh, great, great job today. I want to thank you for stepping up and running uh for office. It's not an easy thing to do. Um, it's something that uh I think everyone should do at one time in their life. I've done it plenty of times, as you might probably know, but uh, uh, I think you never lose an election. Um, you may lose a vote, but you never lose an election. It's a, it's something that uh you'll take with you the rest of your life. Um, going forward, I just want to thank the community also. I, I retired from uh the fire service, like I say, after thirty years. And it was a job that this community supported, uh, never, ever questioned us. Um, they supported me when I was sick. They supported me when I was hurt. They supported my family and provided us with great work. And I, this is one way I can give back. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. We're just a few minutes past one thirty, so I appreciate you all hanging with us, but I want to thank the candidates for joining us. Uh, Lindsay, Steve, Joe Don, Chris, thank you very much for not only putting your name out on the ballot. That's a challenge in and of itself, but also going through the campaign uh which is also yet another challenge. It's a really something to be appreciated and we do appreciate um you not only taking uh the time with us today, but also sticking your neck out in that regard. I do want to let folks know that absentee voting is open now, so do feel free to vote early if you want to. Or you can vote uh day of on November second. It'll be here before you know it, but do make sure that you're making plans for that. Uh, but also we do have some additional resources available for the upcoming uh school board and city council race. The school board candidates will have a similar candidate forum on Thursday, same time, twelve to one thirty. We might not have every single candidate, but we'll have as many pie as possible. We'll do the same thing as we did here today. We'll record it. We'll make it available on YouTube, our website, our newsletter, social media, about every possible way. We'll have the nonpareil there as well to do an article about it. So we'll do our best to make sure we're getting the information out to folks. Also, watch our social media and emails for updates on early voting, day of voting, anything you need to know to make sure that you're getting to the ballot, or excuse me, to the polling place. That's something we're going to be really, really pushing hard. The last thing I'll note too, is we do have an event uh coming up. It is for chamber members. It's um public, it's Policy and Pints. It's Thursday from five to seven PM and it's at Barley's um here on the Hundred Block. So if you're looking for more of an informal social setting, feel free to come on down. Uh, we will allow the candidates to just kind of give a wave. We're going to offer our sponsors opportunities to talk with, but it will largely be based on networking. So if you're very interested in getting to know those candidates on a more personal note, feel free to come to Barley's on Thursday night from five to seven for Policy and Pints. With that, we will wrap up the event and we thank you all for attending and for all that you do for our community and supporting the chamber. Have a nice rest of the day.